All right, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole will now begin.
Hello and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today's Thursday, November 18th, 2021. For the record, I am Bria Smiley. I'm the president of the Planning Commission and I'm filling in for the vice president as the chair of this meeting. Something to note is that this meeting includes the remote participation of members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll to verify that we have a quorum.
Commissioner Baxley.
Here.
Caprini. Ms. Smiley.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Marwa. McGuire is absent. Meyer.
Here.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Here.
Vice President Olson is also absent. There are five members present.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. With that, we will go to the agenda. A copy of it was posted on the city's Legislative Information Management System. It's available at limbs minneapolis 7.gov. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Any of the commission members?
I'll move we adopt the agenda as proposed.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Is there a second?
Baxley, second.
Great. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm not hearing anything. I asked the clerk to please call the roll on that motion.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Here.
I'll count that as an aye. We're adopting the agenda.
Sorry.
Perfect.
You're an aye.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Aye.
Chair Smiley.
Aye.
There are six ayes.
Wonderful. That motion passes and the agenda is adopted. The next on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which was on November 4th, 2021. May I have a motion to accept those minutes, please?
Ford so moved.
Wonderful. Commissioner Ford has moved. Is there a second?
Baxley, second.
Great. Commissioner Baxley has seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, not seeing anything. I asked the clerk to call the roll on that motion, please.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweetsie.
Aye.
Chair Smiley.
Aye.
There are six ayes.
Thank you. That motion passes and the minutes of our last meeting are adopted. We only have one item on our agenda this evening, and that is the discussion item that is the 202630 University Avenue Southeast. And staff is Hillary DeVorek. Thank you, Hillary. You can take it from here.
You are muted. Thank you. You think after 18 months I would get this right. I'm going to pull up the presentation and I apologize, I'm having technical issues today with all sorts of things. So if I drop out of the meeting, I will join you. And if I can't get this to advance, I'm just going to hit my computer a few times and we're going to hopefully keep going from there. So can you see the screen? You can see the context? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna just walk through. I didn't prepare us a different presentation than what was sent to you in the packets. So hopefully you've had a chance to look through everything. I may advance slides as I'm talking, and if I don't, I'm sorry, I can bring slides up and then I'll turn it over to the applicant, or the development team, excuse me, for more information. This is a project at 2630 University Avenue Southeast. You can see the site here. It's on the corner of University and 27th. And it also has frontage along Delaware Street on the south. The site is Zon C2. It's located in the pedestrian-oriented overlay district, the university area overlay district, and the built form transit 30 overlay district. I'm going to just try to advance the slides. Again, I apologize. I'm going to skip through some of this and just walk you through the perspective views as I'm giving you the overview of the project. So the applicant is proposing it's a 16-story mixed-use development with 620 dwelling units and a total of 1,041 bedrooms in the building, along with 4,750 square feet of ground floor commercial space and up to 280 enclosed parking spaces. The principal entrance to the building will be at the corner of University and 27th, which is the image on the screen. And parking for the site will be accessed along Delaware Street Northeast. There will be walk-up, or not walk-up, there will be dwelling units located along 27th, and then the commercial space will be located along University Avenue. Level four of the development contains amenities spaces for the residents. There's also amenities spaces located on the 16th floor of the building. I'm sorry, this is where my PDF is going to crash. The project will require a travel demand management plan. They will need to provide six points of amenities. The project is currently being reviewed. Excuse me, the project requires an environmental assessment worksheet. The number of dwelling units is the triggering factor in that. We are approximately halfway through the 30-day comment period. It closes next Thursday. I guess we're actually three weeks through the comment period because it closes on Thanksgiving at 4 o'clock. We will be bringing the EAW to the city council on November 30th at the biz committee, and then it will go on to full city council after that. Once the EAW process is complete, then they can submit for land use applications. The only applications that we've identified thus far are the travel demand management plan, which is a major TDMP, and then site plan review for the new development. Future land use guidance for the site is community mixed use. The building does meet the guidance of the 2040 plan as it has the 620 dwelling units and then approximately the 5,000 square feet of commercial space. University Avenue is a goods and services corridor. They will be locating all of the commercial space along University. And the site's built form guidance is transit 30, which allows buildings up to 30 stories with a minimum height of 10. And as I had mentioned, the building will be 16 stories in height. So here's the site plan. You can see the main entrance to the building is located here. And then you have the commercial space located along University. This is additional amenities space and then, or common space, excuse me. And then you have dwelling units located along 27th and some building functions do wrap the corner. Excuse me. I'm going to have to go get some tea. And then here's the access to the enclosed parking along Delaware. All of that parking is located above grade. It will be lined on the University and 27th Avenue sides and partially lined along the Delaware Street side of the building. The active liner does not meet our site plan review standard of the 70%, so they will need alternative compliance for that standard. The two items that we wanted to discuss with you today were, or are, the massing of the building and then your thoughts on the active liner or the active function requirement along Delaware. I'm just gonna wait for my PDF. I apologize for these delays. And I will just advance. So as I'm walking through the building, this, whoops, sorry. As we're going up, you'll see the floor plans as soon as my computer reloads. So typical floor plan with the enclosed parking in the middle. Sorry about this, you guys. And then, once you get up to level four, then you can see that the housing units then come across. And this is the level above the parking. I'm going to just try to advance and show you guys the elevations, and then I will turn it over to the development team. If my computer cooperates. And I don't know if it's going to. See if I can manually do this. There we go. So you can see levels five through 15, and then level 16, they do start to pull the building back in, along University up here in the middle of the building, along Delaware's, or along 27th here. And then this portion of the building retracts as you get to level 16. Here are some sections through the building. It is an E-shaped building. Here are the context elevations. And then these are the elevations of the building. So this is your University Avenue elevation with the ground floor commercial and that main entrance, or the main residential lobby, excuse me, on the corner. This is the Delaware Street, so you can see the parking entrance here, and this is for trash and whatnot recycling. This is the 27th Avenue side of the building. And then the west side of the building, there is a four-story building, and you can see here in the dash line. If you can see my cursor run through the massing. This is the four-story mixed-use residential building that is to the west of the site. So you can see that this portion of the building would be blocked from adjacent streets and sidewalks. These are the courtyard elevations. And here's their material palette. It's a mixture of brick and metal with burnished block. Obviously storefront glazing and glazing above. And then they did a shadow study. And then that is the end of their presentation with the elevation. So I will stop sharing my screen and turn it over to the development team, and I am obviously going to stay for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to introduce myself. I'm a partner and architect leading this project for ESG. Is there an echo? Okay, leading this project for ESG, I'm here with my partner Gretchen Camp, our design principal Bert Coffin, and our architectural designer Sam Brissette for the ESG team. We're going to walk through the plans and architectural renderings in a little bit more detail. But before we do, Gary Wallace is going to give an introduction to GrayStar. GrayStar is the development team that is proposing this project. We've got a long history of working with them. They've done a lot in Minneapolis. Gary just wanted to kind of introduce himself and his team and some of the work that they've done here in Minneapolis. Go for it, Gary.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Again, I'm Gary Wallace. I'm the managing director of development of GrayStar. And I'm joined here today with two of our GrayStar Midwest Development Team members, Ned Dodington, who is located, our boots on the ground, in Minneapolis, and also Jordan Howe, who supports Ned in all things related to our underwriting and entitlements. For those of you that are not familiar with GrayStar, we were founded in 1993 by Bob Faith, our current CEO of the company with the mission to grow a fully-integrated multifamily real estate company that would redefine excellence in apartment living. So since our outset, rental housing has been our primary focus. 20 years later, GrayStar has become the global leader in rental housing by leveraging our global knowledge with our local expertise. And this is supported by the fact that over the past five years, GrayStar has been the largest manager of multifamily assets in the US and also the largest multifamily developer. And we're now based in a number of global markets. We have 20,000 team members worldwide in 210 global markets that are across 16 countries and 62 offices. And all these offices provide GrayStar's three primary lines of business. The first, as I mentioned initially, is property management. We manage over 748,000 units and beds worldwide, 90% of that in the United States, clearly. Those assets are valued at $220 billion. Clearly, that's how we get our number one ranking in that category. Our second is investment management, where we have $45 billion of assets under management. 180,000 of those units are owned or have a GrayStar percentage of ownership in the partnership. And lastly, development and construction, which is what we're here to talk about this afternoon, where we have $21 billion of projects underway and $11 billion in the pipeline. So again, that's how we get that number one ranking. More specific to Minneapolis, we have a project management office there that manages over 7,000 units across the Midwest. We've had an ongoing development presence since 2012 that started with our development of the lawn uptown, which is 590 units, and also the Lakes 90-unit luxury project, both in Minneapolis. And then we've done another 600 or so units in St. Louis Park and are currently completing our luxury project in Adina. Then if you've been to Southdale Mall, you've seen it going up over the past two years, 185 luxury units. All these projects were designed by ESG, which, by the way, we have a highly-valued relationship with. They've done all of our work in Minneapolis. They've done projects for us in Chicago as well. And all of our Minneapolis projects have been constructed by local contractors, whether it's Weiss Builders, Eagle, Frana, Adolfson and Peterson, names that you guys probably would recognize. So as we focus further on the University of Minnesota, I just wanted to point out that GrayStar has an ownership interest and continues to manage the hub and the Marshall. That represents 1,650 beds. So with the addition of this project, we would have about 2,750 beds at the University of Minnesota. So GrayStar is very deep into student housing across the country. So again, just in conclusion, we're excited to be here today to share this project with you, to get your feedback on it, and hopefully to move forward through this process. So Christine, I'll turn it back to you unless there's any quick questions on GrayStar.
I don't see any questions on GrayStar.
Sam, do you want to go ahead and queue up our presentation? And we can kind of just walk through the architectural design intent for this project and some of the renderings that Hillary flew through pretty quickly. But we want to just kind of spend some focused effort on, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Absolutely. Thanks, Christine. So we'll start with a little bit of a recap. Again, with our primaries, we are C2, which is what we have designed to for this project. We're under transit 30. And as our main overlay, some additional overlays for this area, we have a university area overlay being so close to the University of Minnesota and a pedestrian-oriented overlay because we are so close to many of the transit stations with the light rail as well as metro transit stations near the university. All these other numbers you've seen before, but just to recap, 620 units for the whole project, which brings us to 1,041 beds for the project. And we are looking at about 440 to use per acre for the site itself. But without further ado, we really want to get into the design. So to preface the design, we really want to talk about our concept. So as we started to study the context of the site, what we found is that Prospect Park, Stadium Village, University of Minnesota area is really this combination of all these different communities that are essentially stitched together. And that's what we think makes this area so fantastic. Even taking a deeper dive into the architecture that's around this area, there's not really one typology that you could find. Really, it's a quilt of a bunch of different urban typologies all stitched together to create this really fantastic fabric within the city. And because of this, we found that we wanted to celebrate that as much as possible by making a building that was distinct in itself, but took a lot of the materials, similar materials to what's around University, Prospect Park, and even some of the newer projects that haven't built in the community to bring those into our project so that we could be a part of this fabric. I think that's most evident really in the massing. So this is a view from the corner of University and 27th. So how we approached the massing was in that same vein of stitching. We have, we've broken the massing up with these vertical, these dark vertical elements that go all the way up through the facade on both University 27th and Delaware. And this creates a unique sort of look with our buildings where we can really start to break the massing up into distinct elements and then starting to change the material palette on each of those massing, those massing areas to really create something that feels stitched together almost like a small, little urban environment within the small, in the city block. Many of the materials that make it distinct and sort of higher-end are the brick on the corner of University. One thing to note about the brick on the corner of University, this sort of change in color is actually not due to any sort of shadows that we're throwing onto this image. It was actually a color change that we're using, a very simple material change with the brick by changing the brick color as it goes up to create a really distinct feature on the corner of University with very subtle and very simple materials that are prevalent both in the MACs, in the university buildings around, and then even down in Prospect Park. We're complementing those areas with the sort of off-white metal panel sprinkled in with some really nice sort of champagne features to make it pop and shimmer, but not really take the show from any other building surrounding it. And then all this becomes sort of stitched together with our sec materials of the dark metal panel and darker bricks. We followed this material palette all the way through the project. So this is a view looking from the southeast at universities. If you imagine yourself standing just outside the stadium, we still get this, these large breakups of the massing, sort of alternating between these darker, lighter, and brick materials to really separate these objects so they can feel not as one large mass in a site that has a context that is typically much smaller than what we have on this current project. A little to zoom in, what we're really excited about is the streetscape that we can develop in this new site. And that includes both the active uses on University 27th and some on Delaware, but also the landscaping that we can bring into the site. So looking directly at the corner of University, we have large open storefront windows that will look into our lobbies. There's also a large open storefront that will look into the retail to really give it a presence on University, start to light up that streetscape and make it a lot safer and a lot, and really sort of bring a lot of beauty into this block. A closer look at those retail areas, really making it distinct from the brick building and the apartment entrance on University so that they can have their own presence, fill it out as they see fit. But it really ties together into the massing that's above the sort of dark complementing the light and with those key features of champagne starting to sprinkle in. And we really see this as a way to start to activate the street along University as best we can, and depending on which retail uses we are putting into this project. Again, a closer look at that sort of lobby area. Like I said before, large open windows, starting to really bring in some awning elements to sort of bring down that scale because this is a very tall building. We want to find places where we can put design features that don't make it feel like things are towering over you, something that feels more intimate, something that feels a little bit close to the ground. So we're doing that with these sort of awning materials. And then also just translating some of that with the different heights of the windows and focusing a lot of our landscaping down below. So there's plenty to look at on the ground floor when people are walking around this site. A look at 27th Avenue. So this is actually right where one of those transitions happens with the metal panel, the break in the massing. So we do have a physical recess within the building to make this happen. And it creates this really great pocket where we can start to introduce other entrances into the building. So there is activity that can happen along 27th. Leasing offices right on this area. Just inside these windows here will be a maker space where students will be able to do crafts or small DIY projects that they see fit for either school or their personal life. So that space will be activated not only by units, but also by some of the amenities that you'll find in the project. And then towards the left of the image, this is where we have the liner units. These are not walk-up units, but they are units lined on 27th. But we have created a really nice buffer to allow privacy for those units. Shift the windows up a little bit so students will find privacy in their units and not feel so directly attached to the sidewalk just outside. Tilting around the building from 27th and Delaware, we're starting to get to the backside of the building. But as you can see, a lot of those materials, a lot of the massing, all translates seamlessly around these different corners, introducing as much landscape as possible, large seven-foot boulevards between the parking areas and the sidewalks for pedestrian safety and a great sense of landscape. And then lastly, the parking garage side. So on the parking garage side, we do have one curb cut only on Delaware, and this will be our access for parking, like Hillary said. And then, but we've really started to pull that typology of the parking garage and started to stitch it into what the rest of the building is by adding highly reflective windows, taking necessary approaches to sort of disguise the parking garage in itself and then put as many active uses as we can along Delaware. And I think we'll just finish with this image, a closer look at the aerial above. Look down to see the amenity deck, which is just above the parking garage on four, a place that'll be really active for students to study, watch the gophers, sit by the pool. And then, just to point out as well, like Hillary said, we do have a amenity terrace and a sky lounge on the 16th floor. This will be perfect for students to, you know, host get-togethers, again, study. There's plenty of views to downtown, the stadium, even the river and some of these more open study room spaces and these notches that you see up above that not only allow us to give some respite spaces for students and create a small little pockets of amenity, but allow us to get really nice breaks in the massing overall for the projects. So that's really high level what we were looking at for our design. Be happy to field any questions that you guys have.
Thank you. I know that Commissioner Meyer has questions and comments, so let's start with that.
Thank you. Hillary, can you talk to us about what the potential alternative compliance might look like for the parking situation?
I guess I haven't thought about that. I think, you know, I think the discussion would be, maybe I should bring up an elevation, but you know, is it a blank wall or is it, you know, have they, is the building articulated enough so it doesn't look like a parking garage? But we haven't, we haven't discussed, I haven't discussed this specific question with, with the applicants.
And yeah. I'll just chime, I was gonna say, I'll just chime in, Chris, and just, or Commissioner Meyer, and say that, you know, our alternative is really that we're providing 100% liner on the east and the north instead of 70% and kind of having a backside to the building on the south side. That's, that was kind of our trade-off. But then also too, if you wanted to zoom in, we're doing, you know, articulation on Delaware where on the left there, you would not really know that that was parking. Christine, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's precisely what I was going to add. We're just, you know, trying to make this feel architecturally integrated into the building versus, you know, kind of a blank facade, but really putting our focus on making sure that we have 100% active liner on the more predominant University and 27th. liner on the more predominant university and 27th furnitures. I think all in all, we haven't done a quite, we haven't done the exact takeoff of lineal feet, but I think all in all, we would be exceeding 70% in total in general. So I think that's, that's a kind of a piece of that, too.
Okay, thank you. And then this is one of the first major projects that's coming forward since we revised our, got rid of parking requirements and started the travel demand management points. Do you have an idea of which options you're going to choose to get to the six points that you need? I'm just really interested to see which options developers are going to pursue. It was kind of, you know, you know, we approved several different options, and I'm not sure which ones are going to be most appealing to people. So I'm very curious, have you, have you decided yet which one, which ones will pursue?
Yeah, I think we looked at several amenities. In fact, I want to say that we're actually pursuing more than is even required for this project. Gray Star was incredibly interested in a lot of the options, and then we were even coming up with more exciting ideas, too. Hillary, I don't happen to have the TDMP pulled up right now, and it might take me a minute to open it. Do you have that shortlisted somewhere?
I'm trying to, yep, I'm pulling it up right now. So the TDM, they're what, they have done a TDMP. It was, it's a requirement for the EAW. So we have, we have talked about this in a little bit. Let me just see if I can get to it in this document. Actually, let me just do this.
I can move on to other questions if you.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and let me just pull it up in the document. I just gotta familiarize myself with it again.
Okay. Well, you know, this is one of, you know, very few transit 30 parcels in the city outside of downtown. They're very rare. And, you know, I appreciated the slide that you included in the presentation of all the various amenities that are nearby. You know, that's something that I appreciate seeing for, for any project because it really highlights what's nearby with the light rail and parks and grocery store and so many different amenities. So I guess my question is, why, why aren't you going for the full 30 that you could? Why is it so much shorter than the hub project that you have nearby?
Gary, oh, sorry, Gary, can you unmute?
I think my mute just sometimes turns itself on. It doesn't want to hear me talk. Yeah, I think that the principal reason here is, is really construction economics to go more vertical at 30 stories in our trying times of the last 18 months with the start of COVID and, and supply chain issues. Construction costs have gone up so much recently that it's starting to put the taller buildings out of range from a cost perspective. It just adds so many things, higher elevator cores, more stairwell cores that are not really accretive to our resident experience or, or rents. So trying to keep the buildings, you know, lesser in height makes them more efficient and more cost-effective for us.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, I would just say that, you know, I, I think it's important to try to enable as many people as possible to live close to light rail and all these amenities that are concentrated near. Hillary, did you have the TDMP thing pulled?
I did, yep. So the points that they're going for is the reduced parking, which is a three-point item, pedestrian enhancements, which is also a three-point item, real-time transit screen, and then unbundled pricing for parking. And then some other ones that were discussed in the TDMP but still need to be verified, deal with scooter parking, and then university shuttle stop. And the developer was going to be talking with the University of Minnesota about having a shuttle stop at, at the development site for easier access for students. And I can let the development team expand on that last one if they've had those conversations or not. But they, those, those extra two are not needed. They only needed six, and they do have eight points without those, the scooter and the university shuttle stop. So they, they have achieved the points that they need without those.
Yeah, I would say we have not yet engaged the university regarding the shuttle stop, but we think with 1,100 beds here and the other new projects that have been delivered, certainly over time, I would think the university would amend their, their bus shuttle to take advantage of new housing locations. So we're hopeful that they would provide that to us. And then secondly, we've vetted all of our parking issues with our management team at both the hub and the Marshall to make sure that we're both meeting your objectives of less parking in, in this area and reliance on mass transit, but also not under parking the project where it creates an inability for us to lease all of our units. So we're kind of walking a high wire act there, but we've got everybody on board with where we're at in the parking.
Okay. Two more comments. So I appreciate the pedestrian improvements that are proposed, you know, eliminating one of those curb cuts, expanding the sidewalk. I do still feel that there is more potential to have maybe some pedestrian-friendly plaza space on the university or 20, the 27th, I forget which was perceived that is. You know, University Avenue, you know, it is a pedestrian overlay area, but it still doesn't feel especially pedestrian. And there's like, not very many places where you can sit outside, for example. So if you're, if, if the commercial space is going to include like, I don't know, restaurants or coffee shops, I don't know what you have in mind there, but it'd be nice to have some outdoor plaza space to make it feel more pedestrian-friendly.
And maybe Sam, I don't know if you want to, he's just kind of showing you there where we could have some outdoor spaces near each of those entrances really, on the east, on the, on the plans, plan east side along University. Yep. There's kind of plenty of space there for, we're kind of walking a fine line, just like Gary said, where we don't want the building too far back from the sidewalk. It's actually a pedestrian-oriented guideline to keep it closer to the sidewalk. But so I think we have like a struck a balance there of our setback.
So that might be going in the opposite direction of what pedestrian-related district is saying?
Yeah, what we have is kind of in the middle.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to note the lack of many outdoor spaces along the road there. And then a, as far as like the color scheme goes, I mean, I'm interested to know what other commissioners think, but I favor simplicity. Like I, I don't know, it feels off to me to have, you know, there's one that's browner than the others. I prefer like, I don't know, a simpler scheme. Maybe just like two colors, maybe more uniform, but that's, you know, not a huge priority, but that's just my aesthetic thought on that. All right, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Marwa?
Hi, thank you for the presentation tonight. I wanted to echo Commissioner Meyer's thoughts about kind of the pedestrian space on the ground floor. It does feel kind of very, the massing feels very heavy, and there's a little bit lack of maybe where an outdoor cafe could go. I imagine as a student, spaces to work outside, there's not balconies on this building, you know, places that you could gather with your friends and work on it, something together feels a little bit like that's lacking. I wanted to understand a little bit more about that maker space that you mentioned on the ground floor. Is that going to be programmed by the building? Is then, are you going to contract with a local arts group? Like just kind of how does that space work? So let you answer that.
It's a great question. So how we envision, so it will be something that is an amenity of the building for the tenants. So it will be a private space. We do have similar maker spaces in a place, Nord House in Northeast. And essentially what's in there are sewing machines, large working tables with, you know, cutting mats, plenty of different sort of smaller tools for people to use, either sort of to fix the things that are broken or make things that they're interested in making. And then plenty of different storage spaces for art pieces, little trinkets, anything that they're planning on saving. So it really sort of takes some, I, I like to imagine as if when I was in architecture school, I would do my models and drawings and all those different things in that area, just for anybody who's, works more with their hands than on the computer.
I have to say at, at Nord House that maker space has become completely like a connector for members of the community that maybe are a little bit more introverted and like working on projects, but they are now connected to others that like similar things. So it's been kind of fun to see that take on a life of its own. Just to speak to outdoor space, I do want to point out, we have a very large outdoor amenity deck up on level four for the students. So there is a lot of outdoor access to outdoor space that's a little bit more private and secure. So there's, there's going to be plenty of amenities out there as well. And then we've also dispersed study areas all throughout the building so that there's little breakout areas in close proximity to all of these dwelling units so that they have opportunities to kind of get out of their unit and experience kind of a space outside of their, their actual dwelling unit.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you. I think some of my other comments is a little bit about the design as well. I, you know, I come from an arts background and I work all over the country, and I'm just starting to see that everything in Minneapolis looks the same. And so this isn't meant to be a slight to you all because we've seen just so many of the same projects day in and day out. Your example slide of, you know, inspiration slides, I mean, it looks the same. And I mean, I just, you know, I feel every time I come back here, I'm like, it's the same projects that we keep seeing. I think there's so many ways to do innovative use of student housing. Like, what do kids want? They want like cool, funky, interesting spaces these days that feel authentic and unique and engaging and feel connected into community. And what we keep seeing is not spaces like this. You guys have such a cool opportunity with the market that you're targeting to do, I think, a little bit more inventive project. I mean, can I, like, can I share a case study? Is that okay? There's one that just came through my desk today of a group that commissioned a mural that's completely on a private development from, you know, that's 700 feet tall that is just like, you'd be like, oh, cool, I live in that building with the famed architect mural on it. It just doesn't have like a wow factor in a way. And every project we keep seeing feels the same way to me. There's not like a, and this is for students. I mean, at the end of the day, how do you differentiate in your own market? We've, there's student buildings after student buildings that are laying vacant right now in Minneapolis. Like, wouldn't you want to have that cool factor? And I feel like as the commission, like, we're supposed to be proving what the built environment looks like, and it's not very varied. This is a dense housing building. It's more than, you know, the six stories. We keep hearing, oh, if it's only six stories, we can't do anything that exciting. This is 16. I just kind of challenge you guys to go back and, you know, use this as a model to be something a little bit more interesting. So that's my comment. I'm going to share this case study with you guys.
Do you guys have access to our chat, by the way? I don't know if, okay, you can see it. Great. Because otherwise, we can email that link. Okay. Are you good, Commissioner Marwa?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Commissioner Baxley?
Hey, thanks, Sam, for walking us through there. A quick clarification, you've talked about this sort of gradated brick. Is that on both sides of that corner? Is it just on, on the one side?
That's a great question. So it is actually on both. So wherever you see that sort of dark brown tone brick is where we have the change material. So here's a quick sort of close look at what we're looking at. You know, we're still vetting different colors, but we wanted to sort of give the essence of this change in gradient. And there's a change in gradient between three different colors for the project. And I think it's most evident in some of our elevations where you start to see that change.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I do, I think the DIY space is a great idea being a kind of a maker myself. I wonder, is that going to be, are you going to be able to open that up to the street or those kind of fixed windows? I mean, I could really see a wonderful opportunity to put a couple of garage doors in there and, and start activating that street through the space as opposed to being completely passive. So maybe something to consider for that would be great.
Sure.
And then I, you know, there seems to be a huge, there's a lot of attention on the kind of major facades and a real drop-off as we come around the backside of the building. And it is, you know, has such prominence there. You know, it really reads as an object building and doesn't really have a, a front and a back. And I'm wondering if we just, it's so stark, the little punch windows, little sort of panelization that we could, maybe to Commissioner Marwa's comments there, those become all sort of big surfaces and billboards. I wonder if there's a way to help brand the building, really give it some life on what now really it feels like the backside. It's almost, looks almost medical in the back. I think it needs a bit more inspired texture that you've obviously invested in on the other side. So I think really consider that it is an object building. There isn't really a, a front and back and to sort of give the care and design that you've, you've started to do on the front of the building would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxley. Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah, just responding to the amenities. So I definitely think you're providing a lot of great amenities for the people who live in the building. I was definitely thinking more about the amenities that are going to be available to the public or, you know, that will make it feel pedestrian for the, the whole community. So I was actually thinking that it would be better to have a little bit of plaza space. You know, that's publicly available and, and take away some of the deck space. That's where I was going with it. But if the pedestrian guidelines are going in the opposite direction of that, then, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't go against that. Just wanted to clarify that, though.
Thank you. Commissioner Caprini?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Marwa for her comments because there's a lot of what she was saying that I do agree with. Because that area is somewhat eclectic. I just guess I, to me, it's, I think it's a beautiful building. I like, I do like, it's a, it is a beautiful building. I just don't know if it's in the right spot. And if the, the, you know, college students, I just think that there isn't, that hopefully you'll take the opportunity to, oh, gosh, I'm trying to not use some of the words that are in my head, push the, push the limit a little bit more and give yourself the opportunity to, to just kind of really hone in on, on who your, your demographic is. And, you know, yeah, that, that's what I want to say. It's a beautiful building, but I do think that it, it could look a little different in regards to the neighborhood that it's in. And again, it's kind of an eclectic neighborhood, I guess. Maybe some other people might disagree with me, but that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Suizy?
Yeah, thank you, President Ismiley. I have, I have a different take on it from some of the other commissioners. I, I like the way that the building looks. I think that there's significant effort that, that's gone into this. I do agree with Commissioner Marwa to a certain extent that a lot of the buildings, particularly the apartment buildings in Minneapolis, look exactly the same. But I don't, I don't think this is one of them. I think the, the, most of the six-story buildings with the balconies and everything, I think those are tired and overplayed. But I actually think this, this is a little bit different and a little bit more sophisticated than some of it. I can tell you that, you know, I think that things are like, what, what's, what's cool art and all that? I think that's extremely subjective and maybe outside the purview of, of what we should be looking at. I'm, I'm all for originality and some things that are different architecturally, but I think we have to get, be careful about suggesting too much based on our personal aesthetics. I can tell you my own experience, having recently finished being a, a parent of three people who went through college in the last 10 years or so, is that they didn't really care what the outside of the buildings looked like, that they were living in so much. That was our experience. They cared what the inside was like. They cared if there was a pool. And I think, you know, I think we want to, particularly when it comes to the outside of the buildings and where they are. And I think, you know, I think we want to, particularly when it comes to the outside of the buildings and where they are, I think as a planning commission, we should be thinking about how they fit into the city. And to me, this is, I think it's, I think it's different than a lot of the things over at the U. I think the higher, the taller you go, the more attention you have to pay to some of these details. So for me, this, this one kind of checks all the boxes. So that probably muddies the water for you, but as far as just maybe the, the cheese stands alone on this, I think it's great. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Suizy. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I'll muddy the waters more, I guess. I, I I would associate myself, myself with the comments of Commissioner Marwa and Commissioner Baxley. I think it's a fairly boring building. I know you, I can see the effort you've been made, but I don't think it results in anything particularly interesting. And I, I was particularly surprised to have you reference the buildings around you and, and then to hear you say that this was, you know, somehow associated with or appropriate to those surrounding buildings. I thought it was very eclectic number of buildings around you in the neighborhood. But I don't see any connection or, or even working against those buildings. But I wanted to particularly focus on, on the Delaware Street and that big blank wall. And, and the notion that it was, it's the backside of the street. I just don't buy that. Delaware Avenue is a public street. And it's no less public than 27th Street or 27th Avenue. Or for that matter, University. And I don't think we should just. I find it not, not appropriate to simply say, well, okay, we got to have somewhere where, where parking goes. And so we're going to stick it back here. And it's, it's okay. Cause it's the backside of the building. I don't think a building should have any backside. So I'd let you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what the, how you can deal with that. But right now I'm, I, I, I don't, I'm offended about the notion of having a back.
Commissioner Ford, I was just going to reply to that. This is Gretchen from ESG. We don't have a blank wall on Delaware. We have full fenestration. There's really no blank walls on any of the three sides of the building. There's a blank wall that faces west, but that's covered up by a building. So there, there really isn't a blank wall. What we're referring to is that fenestration you see there behind there are some parking stalls. That, that's kind of, there, we won't have a situation where we're going to have a blank wall on Delaware. It's going to have fenestration, articulation, just like you're seeing here. So I just want to, I think there might've been confusion there.
Although there was, but I appreciate that.
Yes.
I didn't catch that when I read, when I read the early report, but even so, it's, you know, I think it could use some animation. It is, it is a city street that people will be observed walking down and driving down and it's, you could use some animation of some sort. But thank you anyway for clarifying that.
Yeah. In our formal submit, we can do, when we have our elevations, we can give you guys some measurements like Christine talked about. And we'll be in compliance with the overall intent, which is 70% active uses and liner around parking. We just have 100% on the east, 100% on the north. And then we'll let you all know what our south, I think it's going to be like 30 or 40% on the south. So in aggregate, we'll meet the requirements and we'll be more specific about that when we submit. I guess I'll just address your comment about there shouldn't be a backside to the building. We do have trash. We do have loading. We, we do need some services to the building. So we can't have everything be active. So that's why we have, there's a, there's a mechanics room, you know, there's, we're trying to put some of the more functional parts of the operations of the building on Delaware. So it does end up being a more utilitarian uses on Delaware, which is appropriate for this site.
I understand that, but I think I'd hope that, that some, you know, good architecture, architects could make that more interesting. I'm, I'm particularly burned by a project that I worked on 20 years ago now, the federal courthouse. And then he built that whole block on, I think it must be 3rd Avenue, off the street rather, it's just death. It's just one whole utilitarian block. I think we had just try to avoid that notion of it's a back, it's the back of the building. But thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. I have a few comments to make. First, I should say that I do like the differentiation of color because this building is so large that I think if it was, if it was less, it would feel like too massive. So I like that it breaks it up a little bit. That, that being said, I also, there are some notions to comments that Commissioner Baxley and Commissioner Marwa made that I think makes sense. So I think that there is a happy medium that can, can be found. Doesn't have to necessarily be like too muddy. I do have a, oh, the, the one thing that I would say is that I actually live in Nord House. I know that that maker space is used quite often, same as study areas. I use them myself. I wish there were more. So I don't know if, if, if 620 units are all students, I can only imagine the number of study areas that are available in the plan may not be enough, in fact. And then about the backside versus frontside, I would say to me, the most important thing is to be able to easily identify the entrance. Because there are some, sometimes when you go around a building, you're like, where do I even go in? Like, I don't, I don't know, because everything looks the same. So in my mind, that's more important than, than some, maybe some other notions. The couple of questions that I have first is when Commissioner Marwa brought it, I was like, oh yeah. Why isn't there any balconies designed for this building? And then the other thing is, and I, maybe it was in the background, I missed that. Was there a market analysis done that brought you to design a 620 unit apartment building? And are you sure that it's going to be filled? Are they all going to be students? And, and like, what was the decision-making tool behind that?
Gretchen, do you want me to jump in?
Yeah, I think Gary, if you and Ned want to take a minute, yeah.
Yeah. Great questions. Thank you so much. Again, it's good, good to be on this evening and talking about this project with everyone here. So maybe on the balcony question first. So as Gary mentioned at the top of the call, Gray Star is heavily invested in student housing projects across the country and in fact globally. And so some institutional perspectives on presence of balconies and student housing projects are kind of guiding our decisions here with respect to balconies and that it's just something that as a company and as a corporate entity, we believe are probably best served for more typical multi, multifamily market rate projects than student housing. Obviously there are probably some situations where balconies are functioning just fine. But in this situation, particularly in a high rise and a building of this scale, we've opted to, and under the guidance of our management team, to not include them here. Looking particularly also at the hub has been one of our main kind of guideposts on the design and execution of this project and learning from what works over there is again, helped guide our path here. To the comment about the market study, yes, there's been extensive market analysis into the University of Minnesota. It's purpose-built housing stock that's currently on hand and the depth of the, what we call the shadow market. And so some analysis there is that we can identify roughly somewhere between 20, 27 to 30,000 sort of shadow market bedrooms that are in the marketplace today. And that is students that are renting and non-purpose-built student housing. So of that shadow market, 1,000 beds represents a fairly small fraction of that total, what we view as kind of our demand pool. And certainly, you know, just honestly, we wouldn't be doing a building if we thought it wasn't going to be successful. So we have very high confidence that this building will, will perform and that there will be students living in it quickly, hopefully.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxley?
Just a quick question. Can you talk a little bit about any resilient studies that you, or strategies that you're maybe thinking about for this building, whether it be materials, rainwater harvesting, any, any components? I know that can be challenging on this typology, but just curious if you guys are studying that and might be considering some things that you haven't talked about today.
Yeah, we have presented a couple of times, Commissioner Baxley, to the neighborhood where we did focus more on that. I don't think we ended up submitting any of that, Sam or Christine, in this packet. Is that right?
No, I don't think it's part of this.
But we can definitely submit that kind of thing for the formal, but go ahead, Christine.
Yeah, I just, we're, we haven't made any prescribed effort to look at rating systems. I don't think we're thinking that that's necessary for this project, but the development team has encouraged us to take a look at how close we might be and, and, you know, what some of those guidelines might entail and which ones could be, you know, close within reach. So we're studying that right now. I know that there's been a lot of conversation about district energy at the neighborhood level. I think that we are certainly diving into the details of that, but that really is going to come down to whether or not that comes to fruition. So I think that's something that we've certainly had a lot of conversation about and are keeping on the table, just waiting to see how that actually pans out.
Great. I mean, I mean, you, you do have a bunch of students here and at least my experience with new hires and there's just a real interest in that. And I, I think even a couple of stories be appropriate, whether it's rainwater or certain materials that you're using that it's important to step into that space, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I would just add that we fully agree with that perspective that the student housing cohort is really in tune with these kind of, you know, sustainable climate change issues. So as much as we are able to, we will endeavor, we're endeavoring to include them here. As Christine mentioned, we're, you know, we're studying the district energy system, continuing to look into its feasibility and our ability to tap into it. As well as running sort of, you know, a checklist analysis of the project today to see what kind of, you know, striking distance we may be within a particular accreditation platform.
Yeah, I don't even, I sort of agree with you. I don't think accreditation is maybe certainly a guideline, not a necessity for that, but even take your roof terrace or that room up on the roof. If you had PBs that could just provide enough energy for that one space would be a wonderful story that you could kind of point to that, you know, so you don't have to cover the whole building, but I think a few singular stories around that would be really powerful.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxley. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Or staff or the applicant team? I, I don't see anything. I think that's, that kind of concludes the comments and question on our end. Hillary, was there something else you were looking for? That maybe we should address?
No, I think we've covered it and, and then some. So I think this has been a good conversation. Lots for the development team to take back and think through.
Great. Thank you all so much for, for coming here and answering all the questions. Really appreciate it.
For everyone's feedback. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
So with that, is there any other staff updates or communication you would like to mention?
I did just want to let you all know, as we've mentioned a few times before, 2021 is the 100th anniversary of the City Planning Commission in Minneapolis. And we've tried a few different times to organize some sort of an event and keep getting thwarted by COVID numbers. And that's the case again. We are going to make one more effort before the end of the year. But given the current COVID situation and on the advice of the city's health department, we are not going to be pursuing any sort of in-person event. We do have a little token of appreciation for each one of the commissioners that we will try to get to you before the first meeting or at the first meeting in January or before. We'll coordinate that with each of you through email. And maybe we can celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Planning Commission in 2022, when we all feel a little bit more comfortable about the current status of COVID in Minnesota. So I just wanted to let you know, it's not something that we've forgotten about. We've gotten close a couple of times to having an event organized and just haven't been able to get all the way there. So we'll try again when things look a little bit better in 2022. And for now, you can just look for an email from me about passing on a little token of appreciation to our current commissioners. So that is all I have for you. Thanks again for all the time that you put in as commissioners. We have just a couple more meetings left in 2021 and our first meeting in 2022, as previously mentioned, will be on January 3rd. We will not have a committee of the whole meeting that week. We will only be having a regular planning commission meeting that week. And we'll have your 2022 calendar in front of you, hopefully by the end of January for approval.
Great. Thank you, Kimberly. Are there any other, well, actually with that, we have actually completed all the items on the agenda, but are there anything else that any of the commissioners would like to bring? Okay, if, well, Commissioner Baxley?
I just wanted to thank you, Commissioner Smiley, for your background. I think Commissioner Ford mentioned that earlier. Lovely to see that. So thank you.
Yeah, of course. Well, with that, I guess now I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next committee of the whole meeting is on Thursday, December 9, 2021. And then the next Planning Commission meeting is on Monday, December 6, 2021. Y'all have a good weekend.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.